Y'all ready to go? Okay. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, September 8th, meeting of the Falls Church City Council. Madam Clerk, will you call the meeting to order and we'll -- I'll call the meeting to order and we'll rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. My apologies.
It's been awhile.
It has been awhile. I'm a little rusty. Let's rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, to the Republic of which my nation, our God, and the visible, the government, and the justice of all.
Okay, now it's your turn. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Mr. Baruch.
Good evening. Here.
Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Present.
Mr. Snyder.
Here and present.
Mr. Z.
Here.
And Mayor Tarter.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And so, are there any changes to the meeting agenda? No. Looks like it's what we had before. A motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
To adopt the meeting agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi. And are there any proclamations tonight? I don't recall seeing any. Madam Clerk? Are there any proclamations tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, great. And I do believe we have an oath to administer to one new member of the ESC. Is that right? Welcome, sir. Is it Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir.
Please, come forward. Thank you for your service. Is that your wife and children with you?
It is, yes. They're right there.
Would you like to introduce them or bring them forward with you?
My wife Monica, my son Wesley, and my daughter Chloe.
Okay, welcome to all of you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay.
So, we're going to do your oath of office and just raise your right hand and just repeat after me. I, Andrew Crawford.
I, Andrew Crawford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Environmental Services Council.
As a member of the Environmental Services Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. We appreciate your service. If you could, if you'd like, why don't you bring your wife and children up? We'll get a picture with council.
Come on up.
(inaudible)
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 For coming out tonight. Yes, pleasure. And receipt of public comments. It doesn't seem like there are too many folks here tonight who would be commenting publicly, although I will open it up to public comments. Are there any members of the public who wishes to address us at this time? Also, any written comments? It looks like we do have some written comments. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, indeed, we do. Summary of written comments. We had a comment from Karen Berry at 914 Park Avenue. She submitted comments about the Mason Road project from the residents of the 900 block of Park Avenue. She stated that they are generally supportive of the project and their concerns are mainly related to traffic and parking. They asked that the 67 condominium units be replaced with two single-family homes. The developer provides at least the minimum number of required parking spaces and that resident-only permit parking is provided for residents on Park Avenue. They also ask that the bumpout at the intersection of Park Avenue and Northwest Street is maintained. Then Karen King of 1113 Lincoln Avenue had expressed some concerns about problems with the construction on Lincoln between West and Walnut Street, and the city manager has responded to her concerns. Jürgen Torren and Johanna Berry forwarded an open letter that they sent to the Falls Church News Press expressing concern about the city council's vote to add a bond referendum for Mount Daniel Elementary School to November's ballot. Linda DeMiller forwarded a request to designate September 21 International Day of Peace in Falls Church. Richard Cresspin, 208 Nolan Street, expressed support for the Mason Row project. He stated that while traffic concerns must be addressed, the tax revenue and community beautification will outweigh the risks. Anita Sireo asked that the Sunoco Station at West and Broad Streets be kept no matter what the outcome of the proposed development. She expressed concern that a movie theater at the location would disrupt traffic at the intersection. And then Gary Laporta forwarded a progress report today on the Little City license plates. He said that he currently has about 10% of the required 350 preregistrations and that DMV will not begin production until the 350 are ordered. So, he urged everyone to register for those license plates as soon as possible.
Great, thank you. Are there any council requests at this point? Okay, why don't we go on to the report of the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. Just a number of things I'd like to report on tonight. I will start with a report on activities with the Spectrum Development Group and the proposed project Mason Row, which the council has referred out to boards and commissions. And the council has asked that I provide an update on the developers' progress and specifically, the developers' progress with respect to the five points that were in the motion that the council made to refer it out to the boards and commissions. And significantly, those five points speak to the work to obtain a second commercial retail anchor for the project, to continue to work with staff, to address staff concerns, to meet with the neighbors, to address specific neighbor concerns, to work with our boards and commissions, to get their input and address concerns that come through that process, and also to make modifications or adjustments for the council's review of the residential density. And I sent a note to Spectrum just with a copy of the motion and asked for an update on those points and got a response back from Mr. Batten, which did go into detail of the work that they are doing. And I want to hit just a few highlights of that. Specifically, I think all of council is aware that there was a community town hall meeting last Thursday evening, very well attended. And prior to that meeting, there was a smaller meeting with immediate neighbors of the project. There were a number of concerns expressed at those meetings, and the developer is working with them. And I think those who were at those meetings can sort of make a judgment as to the overall tone of the meeting, but it was, I think, a comprehensive discussion of the project with the development team and many of the neighbors and members of the community. Spectrum is meeting with the Chamber of Commerce on Friday. They also have a follow-up meeting planned specifically for the Grove Avenue residents to talk about traffic calming and other issues affecting Grove Avenue. They are open to further neighborhood meetings, and we don't have dates for those. And they will also be meeting with St. James School for a one-on-one discussion, or not necessarily with the school, but with the St. James Church. They have, Mr. Batten reports on their ongoing efforts to secure a second tenant. And at this time, he does report that they have increasing interest from two dinner and movie operators, and they're having a more thorough discussion with the EDA at their meeting Tuesday night, tomorrow night, about this option and how it would affect the financials for the project. They're also looking at alternative uses if the dinner or movie theater operator does not pan out, and they have other options that they're exploring that could serve as an anchor. And we'll have more information on that as we know more about it. In terms of the massing and density of the project, since first reading with the plans that have been submitted since first reading, the number of condominium units remains at 67 units. They have changed the massing in its current location on Park Avenue to have a step down on the east side of the project that would go down to three floors essentially on the eastern side of the project that would most immediately face St. James' own property. Staff is still reviewing that, but we will continue to work with them on the massing issues. The AAB met on the project last week, and they will be working on the mass of the project and how it presents itself to the street. And of course, the Planning Commission is having its first work session next week on Monday, and that will begin with an open house for all boards and commission members to come to hear the presentation together and to ask questions of the project in a meeting that will be jointly held with the Planning Commission. That's just a quick summary. If you go online, you can see the fuller list of the meetings that they have with boards and commissions, and it's, you know, essentially every night, they've got some meeting over the month of September with one of the city's boards and commissions, where our boards and commissions will be providing their recommendations to the city council. But we're very alive to the fact that the Environmental Services Council, the Housing Commission, these are all areas of focus, and they will give the council their views on those specific areas that are in their area, in their portfolio. In the meanwhile, we'll be continuing to also keep an eye out for the larger and broader issues that the council laid out in its motion for first reading. So, I wanted to provide that report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. In addition.
Are you going to leave that topic, or are you going to go?
I was going to leave that topic, so let me maybe stop there to answer questions, and then I could provide a few other things to report on.
Okay, I think there's a whole bunch of questions. So, I don't know, why don't we start at the end? If you don't have any comments or questions, why don't we start with Ms. Conley and work our way around?
Mr. Shields, my only question is about permit parking on Park Avenue that the neighbors requested, and he's just read. Is that part, would that be part of the project, or is that part of a city effort? Does the CACT have to look at that?
The CACT, that's in their jurisdiction, and so, I'd like to get their recommendations on it. One of the, the city council has adopted an ordinance which lays out our parking regulations, and they are very streamlined and simple, and they may not really address this situation. And so, to address this situation, we need to have a little bit more of a policy discussion and potentially, an ordinance change to probably get at the issue that we're speaking with the neighborhood about, i.e. going to a specific permit or a placard type of a permit, which is right now not one of our things that the policy, you know, adopted ordinances calls for. So, we'll need to have some more discussion about that and also about the enforcement and administration of such a policy if it were something we wanted to pursue with the neighbors.
And would we have that discussion right now between first and second reading, or would that be a subsequent discussion? Or should that be happening right now?
I think probably, to be frank, the neighbors would prefer that it be happening right now, and so I think to be responsive, we need to have it right now. So, I think that's probably what the expectation is.
So, just following up if I could, and I know we got a lot of folks who want to talk, but just maybe to follow up on Ms. Conley's comment. Can you prepare for us, you know, something in an upcoming nearby work session, your ideas of how the plan might work and whether it is workable and what, how it might work mechanically? For example, I mean, permit parking works well as long as you have someone to enforce it. You know, if the parking enforcement guy leaves at 5:00 and you got a parking issue in the neighborhood at 8:00 at night, you know, you have some issues with how does it actually work mechanically, or will it work mechanically?
Those are the things that we need to work out. We currently have a 20-hour-per-week parking enforcement officer, and so, that's not going to, the way we're structured right now, we probably wouldn't be hitting the times that this neighborhood might be concerned about. But we also have to work it out with, right now, there's an existing parking issue that we have to be mindful of how our regulations would affect church operations, just as an example. So, that's part of the dialogue we would need to have.
I would suggest to be proactive. We ought to be considering this right now. And so, if you could bring to us in the next coming weeks, just some ideas, it doesn't have to be, you know, a 30-page plan, but just some ideas of how you think this might work so that we can have that as part of our consideration. If there's not a workable plan, I think that impacts, you know, how this project might work. And so, I think it's relevant for the discussion, and if you could come up with something unless anyone objects in the coming weeks, just something for us to consider, I think that would be helpful. Mr. Baruch?
Yeah, now, I absolutely agree with the notion of bringing that forward sooner than later. It's not just about this project, but if there's gaps in our ordinance, there's other projects that could benefit from a similar ordinance. And I'm thinking specifically of, I believe it's the 400 North Washington Street project, which has, you know, is proposed as 100% commercial, but there's some traffic pattern issues and parking issues. And I believe at one meeting, I suggested that if there's, you know, the parking needed to stand on its own, but, you know, that was really for the developer to sort out along with the tenants, and if not, you know, we would take aggressive enforcement actions parking-wise. So, I think that if there's gaps in the ordinance, we need to resolve that. And I think that we, specifically the city manager, has certain police authorities as far as, you know, what he can do rather than going through the entire review process and putting all the onus on community members. I think they certainly are very important to that discussion, but some of the thresholds are pretty high as far as various measures, so I don't want it sort of tied up in that issue if we have to take actions or if there's gaps. And then, two, I wanted to thank you Wyatt and also the developer for getting back to us with our questions and a progress report, so let's keep those coming. And I think, given the level of detail that they went into, this is a positive sign. And for transparency purposes, if we can also get their responses posted to the website, I believe we already have a page there, but also just having sort of their updates as they're presenting it to the council and to the city, I think would be helpful of having that one area so we can keep track of it and the public knows where to go if they happen not to be listening to this meeting. Thank you.
Is it possible, along those same lines, to have, I was at the town hall, and I heard about where to find some of these things, and it seems like they're somewhat in different places. Is it possible just to have like a Mason Row link and then there's, everything falls underneath it? You know, in other words, so it's all in one place? It seemed like it might have been split up a little bit from what I at least recall hearing at the town hall meeting?
No, there's one Mason Row page, and.
But not just for like their plans, but for example, for a tape of a hearing at which it was at. You know, for example, when they presented their last work session, well, here it is. It's all linked to the information, not just their set of plans, but actually, public hearings that are taped or televised could actually link up under the same thing so people could have sort of one-stop shopping, as opposed to trying to have to figure out where in a hearing this, for example, might have come up. Is it possible to do anything like that?
Well, what we have is the schedule and all the plans. Having the actual link to the meetings, we'd have to go through Granicus for that, so that I don't think we can do. But everything else, the whole idea is to have it be, you go to one spot and you can find out when the meetings are and view the plans and not have to hunt around for them. Watching the video, I think we may just need to have one step for them to be able to do that, but I think it's a little bit more difficult.
Did you have any comments, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just to reemphasize the importance of our five issues being addressed. And then, at one point, I asked for the per-square-foot cost of placing municipal facilities in that building as opposed to building either onto existing structures, and I'm thinking about the library and/or City Hall versus building new. And so, I still would be interested in that number if there is an opportunity here to address our municipal needs within the context of that development, considering that it looks like, well, it's gone past first reading anyway, so it is moving. I think that it would make sense for us to explore that again, just starting with the per-square-foot cost. We know we have a major library expansion that's been requested, and I know there's a task force working on City Hall expansion, so I'll be interested in seeing those numbers.
Others who have comments? Mr. Duncan?
Just two questions. You mentioned that the St. James folks are being talked with by the applicant, which caused me to think, what's the nature of our conversations with St. James about, you know, traffic movement around their property, utilization of their current surface parking? I drove by there one day last week and was struck by the fact that, you know, they have three quite large surface parking lots, which are almost completely empty during the daytime, and this was a school day. And, you know, I'm certainly in favor of the applicant talking to St. James, but I wonder if we also might discuss with them, you know, better utilization of their parking and also the nature of the traffic movement between the church and the school. Currently, there's, you know, just one-way access on that part of the street, Spring Street, and, you know, the traffic patterns might work more efficiently if we just took a look at that. So, that's something I put in there. Let's not just rely on the applicant to talk to the St. James folks, let's engage them also. The other question is, I think all of us who were at the meeting on Thursday night, you know, held our tongues and let the folks ask their questions, and that's good, that's the way we should do. There were some things, you know, brought up that begged for explanation or clarification. The one that struck me most was the public service costs associated with two townhouses, at least in some areas, are equivalent to those probably associated with the 60-plus condominiums. And that's a hard case to make unless you've got good facts right at the handy, but it's a very important case to make because if you read the letter from the neighbors about the condominiums, you know, we need to get rid of the condominiums, their concerns are really, you know, 11 times in that short letter about parking. So, I guess I'm asking, you know, if there's some way that we can present elements of the economic impact components of the proposal in a way that will educate folks about some of the choices that we have to make here on council when the thing comes to us and we're asking ourselves, does it return as much as a property that size should return?
Anything else on that end of the table? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. This is obviously turning into the segment that should probably be captioned, "We want to be known as the council that gets stuff done." So, I have two topics. Hopefully, they're fun. The first one is the bike rack at the Hilton Garden Inn. And coming off the last work session, I was made to understand that there was an amended site plan, site plan amendment being filed and that Paul Stoddard was going to take that opportunity to stipulate where a bike rack could be located. And lo and behold, the next day, I'm having breakfast at the Hilton Garden Inn, and there's one Paul Stoddard dressed up in a fluorescent vest and hard hat, and I said, and he came in and said, "Good morning." I said, "What are you doing here?" He said, "I'm looking for a place to put the bike rack." So, instead of reporting where you are on the bike rack, I want to see that bike rack as part of the site plan amendment, and I want to see it in a physical location that is easily accessible from the main entrance, that people can see it. Or, as council, I think we'd be happy to tell you exactly where to locate it. So, that's one. That's the fun part. The second one is the West End Park, which I would like to rename the Harry English West End Park. I think the man that spent over two decades planning various shrubs and bushes and taking care of the park needs to have that named after him. It kind of rolls off the tongue, I think, the Harry English West End Park. We could probably get a sound big enough to accommodate that. Speaking of that, I'm given to understand that the mulberry tree, this specimen mulberry tree at this point, has been there 25 years, was going to be saved, which is a big request to the neighborhood. And now, I'm hearing from the neighborhood that they've been told it's going to be taken down, and the contract's been led on it. So, I don't know what is the fog of war and what's contracting, but I would like an affirmative statement made by the new arborist looking at the set of plans and where you are to either tell us that the tree's going to be preserved or it's to be taken down. And I would like the answer to be the tree's going to be preserved. The second part of that is the part that I think would have a hard time playing on broad daylight after enacting a huge stormwater structure, that we're losing an unprecedented opportunity to do some bio-retention, pick up the water that runs off Grove during a storm event. And since this park is not going to be worked on until the spring, I think there's ample time to look at, design it. We had this conversation, as I recall, earlier this summer, and I thought that we were going to take a look at this on-site, so there's still opportunity for that, and I'd like for that to happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll tell you, if I could just follow up on a couple of points, and I have a few that are somewhat unrelated, and I don't know if you had something in a related point, or you had a related point?
Just have a quick question.
Sure.
Wyatt, could you please remind me of the schedule for when the boards and commissions are supposed to report back to us?
The boards and commissions are supposed to report back to you in October, and I don't have a date on that, but broadly speaking, September is when all the boards and commissions are doing their work and providing their recommendations to you. You'll receive those in October, and then, in early October, we will also expect a revised application from the developer. We'll get feedback, we'll come to the council with that, get council comments on that and direction on that for a final resubmital, which we will then have in late October, and have that to evaluate during November with the Planning Commission and, you know, with public comment on that revision, and then action in December, December 8th. That broadly speaking is the schedule.
So, if I could just clarify, after the revision comes back, can the boards and commissions amend the comments that they've previously submitted? And I asked specifically for the Architectural Advisory Board, which commented that since the architecture was in the very preliminary concept stages, they couldn't provide substantive comments in their area of expertise.
Yeah, the AAB is a board that needs to be involved in the process all the way through, and they will also be involved at site plan if it gets to that point. So, they will need to have multiple looks at it. For the other, for most, as the general statement, what we would look for is the recommendations from the boards and commissions, and then the council just need to assess, did the developer actually address them adequately? And we won't necessarily have all the boards and commissions do a second review. They will have gone on record with their recommendations, and we'll just have to assess, did we get there?
Thank you.
But the Planning Commission and the AAB are two boards that will be involved in this process all the way through and have multiple looks at it.
Do you have something, Mr. Berg?
Just one unrelated comment. The city's website, I think on the webpage, it's something I'd raised before, looks very good just graphically on regular computers, but on the mobile app piece, it's very clunky. So, I think Susan was going to take a look at that. And it's hard for me to describe it any other way than clunky, but it's just not as sharp as it could be, and I think, given where we're at technology-wise, a lot of people are using smartphones and tablets and all of that, and the mobile site is just not, not what I think it needs to be as far as our presence. Thank you.
Great. Couple of questions or comments from myself, if I could. One, I guess, just following up with the Hilton Garden Inn discussion we had or comment we had a minute ago. I would echo those concerns. I mean, we did raise that, and this has been a priority of this council, I think, to encourage non-vehicular transportation, particularly walking and biking. biking, and it seems to me this is a prime opportunity with new construction, and if we can't figure out a way to put a bike rack within, you know, sightline of the place, we got to go back, take a step back and figure out, just to get things done. And so I would encourage you to take that other look. I know there's some reasons why each thing has got its issues, but at the end of the day, we're here to solve problems, and to me, that is a solvable problem. And I would also say, to the extent that council needs to adopt new regulations to make that more properly codified, so the developers are aware that they have that obligation, then I think we should do so. And I know I had some communication with Paul Stoddard, and it may be on tap for, I think, seven years from now, is what I understood the timeframe for that. I think we need to move that forward a little bit, and to try to get that on the books if we need to.
One thing I would just note, every project that's been built in the city in the last 10 years has bike racks in very visible locations, generally on Broad Street. All of the staff that worked on the Hilton Garden Inn on transportation are no longer with the city, and so we don't know exactly why the decision was made here. It is unusual. Every project has bike racks right there on Broad Street. I do know that that frontage for the Hilton Garden Inn was one, because it's a hotel, that the fire marshal had a great deal of interest in having unencumbered access to the front of the building, because they won't have it on the Burger King site, knowing that that was going to redevelop. I suspect that that might have had something to do with it. It was not an oversight, it was part of the give and take and the compromises that get made in the site plan approval process. But the comments have been heard, they've been understood, we're looking at it. We just need to make sure that, as a site plan amendment, it has to go through that process. And so we just need to let that process work. It seems like an easy thing to do, but there are reasons why all these things have to be considered holistically. I'm not anticipating it'll take a very long period of time, but that evaluation just needs to happen, and it's underway.
Sure, we appreciate that, and we know things are not as easy as they appear at face, at first blush or at face value. So I don't think anybody's pointing the finger, but just want to encourage staff to try to find a solution to this issue, and all, and the same thing going forward as well. So anyway, thank you for your comments on that. A few other items. This is the last night for our interim city attorney, Pat Taves, and we wanted to just, as a council, thank you for all the hard work and fine work you've done over these past 10 months. It's been a pleasure to have you here with us, and we thank you for all your good work and keeping us out of trouble. So on behalf of council, I do want to, again, express our appreciation for all your good work. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Unfortunately, when y'all meet on the 22nd of this month, I'll be in Scotland with my wife and my sister-in-law, brother-in-law, but I'll be thinking about y'all. This has been a long, clean trip to go back to her homestead and kind of check that part of the world out. But I also wanted to thank you and the members of council for all the support and everything else you've given me over the last 10 months. It's been a fairly long ride as interim city attorney. I didn't expect it, expect that it would be 10 months long, but we started out back in December, finishing up the, probably the largest, largest deal that we've ever had with the city in terms of selling the water system to Fairfax Water. And one thing that can be said about City Falls Church is, it's not a sleepy little burg. Over the 10 months that I've been here, we've done a whole lot of things. We've gone through, you know, assisted living projects. I went through a multimillion-dollar deal that y'all had to sell the property for the Harris Teeter property, and now we've seen that project grow over the past five or six months. But the pleasure has been mine to not only work with y'all, but also to work with a very amazing staff that works for the City Falls Church, from Wyatt on down. I will tell you this, that's one of the things that, I won't say I was surprised or shocked, but I did start this work with some anticipation, because I had worked for 26 years for the county Fairfax, and Fairfax County prides itself as having the top-notch staff in the entire Commonwealth. Well, I've got to tell you that your staff ranks right up there with them. From top to bottom, you have genuine people, hardworking, intelligent, experienced. You ought to be very proud of them. It was my pleasure to work with them over that time, and I can't say that with staff I ever had any bad experience with them. I mean, you know, it was a learning process for me, learning process for them, and so it's been quite a ride. Also wanted to say thank you to the citizens of the City of Falls Church. I've run across several of them, some of whom come into the city attorney's office with questions, or arguments, or complaints, or whatever, and we've tried to deal with them as well as we could. But all of them have been very polite, respectful, and very kind people. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Why don't you come forward, and maybe we'll get a picture, if you'd like, and we'll give you a congratulatory handshake. So just a couple of other things. One, on Mason Row, I didn't get a chance to speak when we were talking about it. As I understood your comments, Mr. Shields, or your relay of the developer's comments, it sounded like they addressed two of the five points. Is that right? In other words, bulk and massing through the step-down, and then the second anchor issue with respect to their working with, you know, folks, the theater possibly, to come up with a second anchor. Were there any responses on the other substantive issues?
Well, on the other issues, if you, if you look at the motion itself, the other items in the motion, let me just read them for the council. So the first one was that in addition to the commitment to the hotel and the voluntary concessions, the applicant will also have in place, prior to second reading, a written contract with an additional anchor acceptable to the council. Two, the applicant commits to adjusting the residential density and massing of the project to levels that are acceptable to the council. Three, the applicant will work in good faith and timely manner to address all the comments it receives from the city staff, including the 31 areas identified in the staff report. Four, the applicant will work in good faith and a timely manner with the planning commissions and boards and commissions, and with, on comment from the public to improve the project, including, but not limited to, those relating to traffic impacts, aesthetics and massing, location of residential density, compatibility with the surrounding area, walkability, quality of development, quality of retailers, and any other legitimate issue that may arise. And then finally, five, the applicant will continue to meet with adjacent neighborhood. And so I think the report stands for the proposition that all these are works in progress, and they don't have specific announcements yet on specific accomplishments in these areas. But that's, you know, that's the process that we're in.
Back to the 31 items that you're working with the developer on as far as staff comments, is there any update on that?
Not that I can deliver tonight. There is a resubmital, and we're evaluating that, and so our comments will change based on that resubmital, or be refined with that resubmital.
When do you anticipate having that information for council?
That also would be in that October timeframe, when we try to bring all the board and commission comments together with the staff comments and come to council with those.
Okay, Mr. Baruch?
Thank you. Wyatt, I just had the opportunity to look at the actual email you sent us with our comments. One of the issues that the developer's raising, this has to do with the second anchor, and locating that underneath the podium. I think specifically, they were looking at theater usage, which would be under the podium. Apparently, our code may not specifically address that use, so there's a meeting happening with city officials and the fire folks. And from the email, what I gather is that they want some assurances that that's a viable option under the code and fire issues. If there's issues that need clarification that are still meet public safety needs, et cetera, but if it's a gap in our code, putting aside the fire issues, which I understand are sort of over here, but if it's some type of code or zoning issue, if you can bring that forward to council's attention sooner than later, if that will help move this process along, as council member Dan Z mentioned, we should be trying to be a council of doing. And if there's things that we can do, if that's an ask that we have, is, you know, shore up your second anchor tenant, and yet our code is a little unclear, and it means some type of code change or clarification that's needed, I think that's something that we should do quickly. And if it's a zoning issue or a code issue, I know that that has a process and takes readings, two readings, and then board and commission input, so we need to get that underway quickly.
I agree. And so the good news is that it's being addressed now, sooner rather than later, and there won't be any surprises later down in the process. So I think that's very positive. The developer did have essentially an all-hands briefing for all of our building staff, anybody at the staff level who would be involved in the project. That happened over a week ago, and I think that is what came, you know, that's one of the things that came out of that, just in a very preliminary way, and they're working it.
So can I just ask that on our meeting next week, on Monday or before, if you can just give us a status report just on that piece of, do we have a code or zoning issue that needs to get clarified? You know, what I don't want to see is this back and forth that sometimes happens between building officials and the developers, and it just goes on for months, and then we find out, you know, we're reaching certain timeframes, and it's all of a sudden a crisis. That, that's, I don't want, I want to try to avoid that, and just want to make sure council's engaged in that small piece as we move forward. Thank you.
Thanks. And one last question before we leave the Mason Row subject. I've heard suggestion at the town hall that the city somehow asked the developer to replace these two single-family houses with the 67-unit condominium building. That doesn't seem accurate to me. Can you elaborate on that, or confirm that that, in fact, didn't originate with county staff or city staff?
The, I will stay, say that the initial idea for the two houses was a staff idea and an early meeting, and that remains, I think, an approach that the staff supports because of the underlying zoning of the property, which is R1B, and the comp plan, which does not anticipate that being different. Now, we have an amendment to the comp plan that would make it, make that change, but that's the reason why the staff had recommended that in the past. The, in some of the early work sessions with the council, I think a council comment was, let's have that be open space as opposed to two houses. And so that was conveyed to the developer. The city, not that I'm aware of, have requested that the multifamily density be placed on that location, and we've proposed that it actually be moved to an alternate location on the site since that. So I think that's the history of the staff, or the staff and city interaction on that question.
Thank you. Okay, a couple other things that I thought I would mention. Mr. Vice-Mayor Snyder and I met with Penny Gross last week, as we said we did, said we would do. We conveyed the need for further study, the transportation aspects of the plan, of the Seven Corners Plan as relates to Falls Church, and we had a, I think, a very constructive meeting. And I think she understands, Supervisor Gross understands our concerns. So again, I want to report a, I think, a helpful and constructive meeting. Do you have anything you want to elaborate on, Mr. Vice-Mayor Snyder?
Yeah, I would say that there is an interest in having a close cooperation, in fact, total unanimity of close cooperation between the county and the city on the transportation components of that plan, which will take shape in the future. So I think the bottom line is that while the plan itself may move forward, the transportation components will be carefully worked through between the city and the county, perhaps on a, on an expeditious basis, but still worked through with lots of public input and city and county working together on that. So I think what's gone is any sort of unilateral approach to this, but rather an understanding that we share great interest in transit in that area, and a great interest in working together to make sure that new traffic problems aren't created. Is that fair? Okay, thank you.
Great. And then lastly, there is, the governor has proclaimed that there will be a day of service in Virginia. This will be a third year of this program, and this year, the focus is on feeding the hungry. So between September 11th and September 28th, or, I'm sorry, September 11th, yes, and September 28th, Falls Church citizens are encouraged to contribute canned goods to feed the hungry at collection points designated in the Falls Church news press, and I think also as well with the city. Volunteers will be passing out bags at the Falls Church Farmers Market for use of items requested by the food, local food banks. I don't know if you have anything additional to add to that, Mr. Shields?
We could bring to the council, if the council would like, a resolution or proclamation to join in with the state to mark this.
I think that would be a good idea. Obviously, we can't do that tonight, but it goes on until the 28th, and so our next meeting, a regular meeting, would be captured by that. So why don't we give some thought to maybe having a formal proclamation, as many other folks have been doing throughout the state as part of this program. So why don't I mention that, and why don't we go ahead, unless there's anything else, and move on to business on the agenda? Did you have something else? I'm sorry.
Just two, two good news things, and this is really for the public. The council, of course, is very well aware of this, but the city has been recognized for two, one regional honor and one statewide honor very recently, and just wanted to tout that. Through the work of the Environmental Services Council, the city will be presented by COG with its Climate and Energy Leadership Award at its upcoming meeting on October 8. And we're being recognized for the city's success in achieving the green power community status through the EPA, and we did that through very effective and collaborative public-private partnerships. Through that effort, right now, the city purchases over 400, 541,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity from renewable services. That's over 5% of the total electricity consumed citywide by our residences, businesses, and the city government itself. And I will also take this as an opportunity to remind everyone that's out there that you do need to renew your purchase agreements for renewable energy in many instances. And so if you did that through Dominion Power, this is a time to make sure that you renewed that and spread the word to your friends and neighbors to do so as well. Many kudos to Tim Stevens, city resident and head of our city climate change task force, who did a lot of the legwork in, with the business community, along with the Chamber of Commerce, and former city employees Brenda Creel and Ken Lasso. And Dan Z spearheaded the effort to put in with COG for this, for this recognition. So it's very good to have. And secondly, the Virginia Municipal League has honored the city with one of its state achievement awards for our work with the Easter Seals this past year in helping them relocate from the Cherry Avenue site to their new home on Huntington Avenue. And it was an effort that required the council's leadership and a lot of work by city staff to help them with all of their approvals in getting that site ready under a very tight line, timeline, to be open for its preschool, which serves youngsters in our community with the greatest needs. I did share this with John Horwich with the Easter Seals, and he sent a very nice note back expressing his appreciation for the partnership with the city and with Monarch Construction that allowed that to happen. So those are just two good news that I wanted to make sure that the community was aware of, and at the VML conference, we'll bring home our new achievement award at the annual banquet in front of all of our peers statewide.
Great, thank you. Why don't we go on now, and move to business on the agenda? Would you call the first item, Anna Clark?
First item is 10A1. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter 35, Stormwater, Article 1, Stormwater Management of the Falls Church City Code, TO 14-20. Church City Code, TO 14-27.
And this item is before the council for second reading and final adoption, and it reflects changes required by DEQ after their assessment or evaluation of the ordinance that was adopted last spring. And it also reflects changes mandated by the General Assembly in its session last spring. The changes are technical in nature, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Okay. Are there any questions from council?
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. The stormwater effort, in part driven, largely driven by the state, which has devolved a lot of responsibility on localities, as usual. And then we've responded, as we all know, with this separate enterprise fund, and there are additional costs to our citizens and additional obligations growing out of this whole area. My question is, do city staff have the ability to respond quickly to the needs of citizens and businesses who have to go through this process?
Well, one of the things for the business community that this code change does, it is part of devolution, but businesses used to have to go through the state for their stormwater permits. And now that's devolved, and we'll handle that at the local level. So I think it will be more responsive service here at the local level than the slower process that the state typically has. For our residences, there's no question, with these new mandates, there are additional burdens for homeowners that are redeveloping their property in a significant way. And the threshold for falling under this act is the disturbance of 2,500 square feet of soil, which is an area about the size of this room. So it's a major project. If you're doing that, then you fall under the new mandates. One of the positives, though, that I do think comes about through this legislation is that the city does now have more authority than it has had in the past to try to address neighbor concerns relating to redevelopment. Meaning if there are downspouts that are putting water directly onto a neighbor's property, we have more tools now to mandate that the developer or the home builder do things to avoid that water running off onto the neighbor's property, more tools than we had before.
Let me follow up and re-ask the question. Do we have the staff, and we should, to promptly carry out these responsibilities? So if a citizen wants to do a significant building project and they presented the city staff, how long can they expect it to take to process it?
Well, for a major, either a tear-down or a major addition in the city, the process is a multi-month process for the grading plan review. And that's the case before this ordinance was adopted, and it will remain the case afterwards. Will it add additional time? Since we already had the grading plan requirements, I think that the changes that are required are stricter, but in terms of the length of time, it will not cause it to be a longer period of time.
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, we've spent a lot of council time over the last couple of years in enacting various laws, providing for an enterprise fund, and it's incumbent on the city now to be able to perform efficiently our part of what we're asking the citizens to do. So I'm just emphasizing again that I will be very wary of any citizen complaints we get about a length of time, and that's going to have the need to be addressed, because the worst thing you can do is add burdens to people and then inordinate delays for them to comply with the obligation that you've just imposed on them. So just a word of caution that I think we should all be sensitive to this and make sure that we have an efficient process. But first of all, our citizens know what the standards are, and then we've got a process to help move them through that to comply as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Could I just follow on that? That calls to mind a conversation that I had Thursday night with a citizen who attended the meeting on the project on Grove Avenue. She lives in one of the long-established homes there and referred to the impact that the new construction around her next door, both sides, had had on her property. This is something that's already been done, so it doesn't fall in the category of going forward, you know, applications and reviews and so forth. What do we tell someone who's in that position? Do we have staff who can go into situations like that and, I don't know, basically kind of try to retrofit something that we should have picked up earlier, or maybe we couldn't have anticipated it, but it's clearly a problem in her mind? To whom do we send some citizen like that?
Well, I'd be, if you sent her to me, I would make sure that she spoke with the right people in our Public Works Department. I will say that we do get a number of calls like that, and sometimes there are things that we can do and sometimes there are things that we can't do, that are just a nature of redevelopment. As I said earlier, I do think that these code changes give us more tools for redevelopment that will happen in the future to address neighbor concerns than we currently have. And to follow up on Mr. Snyder's concern, I will say, just anecdotally, the complaints that come to me, the majority of them come from neighbors, not from builders themselves, or from homeowners who are trying to do a project in the city. The majority of our time through a problem resolution is coming from neighbors. And that does have an effect of slowing projects down, just in terms of some things that we've done institutionally over the years. For instance, in the city of Falls Church, we advertise and provide notice to all the neighbors when we do the grading plan review. Most other jurisdictions don't do that, but we did that five years ago out of a concern that neighbors were having about redevelopment that was happening in their neighborhood. And that does add time to the review process, and it's unique to the city of Falls Church. But I think that that is responsive to where we get the majority of our input in our building permit process.
If I could just, I mean, I think the problem is, in a situation where you have an established homeowner, we basically, you know, have grandfathered in whatever problems that they may have. And now that we're actually charging them a stormwater fee, that they're paying in addition to their property taxes, there's a heightened sensitivity to the fact that they're paying extra and, you know, in their view, getting no response. They may have gotten no response earlier, but they weren't paying extra. So there's an extra kind of salt in the wound. So I don't know. As we go ahead into the next budget cycle, we just might think about learning more about how our staff is deployed to handle specific situations. And perhaps it's enough to just bring them to your attention and they can be dealt with. But I do think it'd be useful to have a broader understanding in the public that we do care about folks who have been here a long time and who may have issues, and we would like to try to work with them if we can. If we can't, we just have to tell them we can't. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, why don't we open the matter up to public comment? Is there any member of the public who wishes to address this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any council comments? Okay, seeing none. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mayor move of TO 14-27.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Zee?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is a consent item. Mr. Shields, are you intending to have these done individually or all as a group?
All as a group, sir.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to say about any of these?
There are four items on the consent, and I'll just note them very briefly for the record. The first is approval of FY 2015 and 2016 performance contract between the Fairfax Falls Church Community Services Board and the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services. This is required by the Code of Virginia that the governing body of every county and city has to approve the annual plan and the budget of its respective CSB before the CSB can be eligible for grants from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services. And so that's what this would do. There was a public hearing, or I'm sorry, the performance contract has been available to the public since August 4th, and we've received no comments on it. The second item on the consent calendar is expenditure of up to $275,000 annually for the purchase of unleaded fuel per our existing contract with James River Solutions LLC, and authorization to renew that contract annually for, subject to annual appropriation of funds by the city council. This is to ride the fuel contract that we do through COG that allows us to obtain the lowest possible price. It's not our diesel purchase contract, which is a different contract, and we do purchase biofuels, diesel for our diesel equipment. The third item is authorization for the city manager to execute on behalf of the city project agreements for the NVTA-funded projects, and this was discussed at your work session last week. And then lastly, on consent, is a resolution appointing Councilmember Karen Oliver to the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority Planning Coordination Advisory Committee for calendar year 2014.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address these items? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Is there any member of council wants to remove any of these consent items from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move approval of the consent items.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Zee?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other business not on the agenda, Mr. Duncan?
I'm sorry, I was punching for council member comments, I don't mean to jump ahead.
There probably are no matters not on the agenda, so why don't we jump to council member comments?
Okay, just a question, scheduling in nature, in line with the VML award. Madam Clerk, have you received word from everyone about the meeting on the 6th being postponed to October the 8th in order to facilitate staff and any members who might want to attend the VML?
I have heard from almost everybody. It seems like it's a go, everybody?
Okay, well, I'm concerned about, you know, noticing the meeting because if we're going to move it, that's something we should do as far in advance as we can, since a lot of folks' schedules are involved. So I hope, I hope personally, we can do that. The only other thing is to say, this Saturday is the Fall Festival and Taste of Falls Church. I have it on good authority that someone on the dais is a judge in the Taste of Falls Church competition. And Sunday is the Falls Church Education Foundation Run for the Schools Run and Walk for the Schools, so I encourage everyone to register. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other, Ms. Conley, then Vice Mayor Snyder?
Okay. So following what Mr. Duncan just said, I brought some registration forms for the Run for the Schools. So if you haven't registered, I'll pass them out. There's a map. It's a great event, though. There'll be about 700 people there. It's a great way to start the day. You can walk, you can run.
Can you?
You can register online. It's probably easier than using a form at this point.
And so it's not just the Run for the Schools? It can be the Walk or the Run?
It could be the Run or the Walk. You could go 5K or one mile. You can bring your kids. It's a lot of fun. I think there's a moon bounce afterwards.
Yeah, I've signed up for it. You'll see me heaving on the side of the, yes, for the moon bounce, exactly.
Or maybe it's not a moon bounce, it's a dunk tank. Have you signed up for that? The dunk tank?
No. I've signed Nader up for it, though.
I'm going to be too busy running to prepare to judge.
And then I just have one more question, and that is about proclamations and requests for proclamations. When, there was a request in here about the International Day of Peace, and Mr. Duncan had suggested when that came in that we should come up with some rules of procedure for how all these come through council to councils, that we have a sense of how this works. I don't know what anyone else thought about that, but I think that is a good idea, because different people's ideas come and there's not, it just depends on who they ask and how that person follows up.
I think that's a good point. We already had some discussion about the Day of Service, and so I think we sort of need to jive that with this other request we've got. I'm not sure what the answer is to it. The Day of Service is time-sensitive. I don't know how sensitive the Day of World Peace is.
This says the International Day of Peace is September 21st.
Okay. May the first next year or this year?
Coming up.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure I have an answer to those questions right now. I think we certainly need to adopt a policy.
Can I ask a question in regard, is it possible for, you know, the mayor to issue a proclamation without the city council actually having to, you know, go through the process of approving it? I mean, I'm just wondering, we do spend a fair amount of time on these things, and I don't know in every instance whether it's necessary that...
I don't think we approve proclamations as a council.
Proclamations, resolutions, I mean, is there an avenue where the mayor could participate in the International Day of Peace, for instance, without the council having to take as much time as we're now taking to talk about it? That's my question.
I mean, I don't think legally, anyone has to approve the proclamation. I think just a matter of course, it's coming really from the council as a whole. It's not coming from, this is just an office. So I think that's the idea behind having the support of the whole group, because it's really coming from everyone.
I think if we're going to start seeing a lot of these requests, I mean, I think having the general gov folks take a look at it and coming up maybe with some criteria or pre-vetting them somehow, I think falls in line, just having the rest go for them, and if it's something that we should take up, then...
I mean, could there be a spot on the website that says if you'd like to request a proclamation, enter here? And then it goes through a process?
How many of these do we get?
Well, right now, you're getting all of the ones that are requested. I think the policy question that often comes up is if there's some sensitive national topic, and sometimes councils get pulled into those willingly or unwillingly. And I think that would be the nature of the policy question, would it not? And I remember during like the Iraq War, there were some city councils that were adopting resolutions, whether we should do that or not, and others were saying, well, wait a second, should we as a local board do that, you know, weigh in on that at all? And so International Day of Peace was slightly in that discussion. Is that really a local issue? So perhaps we could have that discussion offline and see if we need a policy, and if not, we'll bring it back to council for your consideration.
Okay. Are there any, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah, I would say there's a justifiable reluctance on the part of this local government body to engage in larger issues, because we certainly have our hands full with local issues. So there's always been a justifiable reluctance, but there have been exceptions. I think partly the exceptions have been made when we have a sense that there's a broad community support for taking the action. So I think a way of gauging that and learning what that is might be very important. Second thing is, there are some things that clearly have a local nexus. Day of Service, for example, it seems to me does. I know we had one on redistricting, supporting redistricting. I think that's a local nexus, and yet I haven't heard enough from the community to know if that's something we want to move forward on. So I think there's an iterative process here, at least so far, that I think we start with we should stick to purely local issues, and then we've made exceptions when there's been broad-based community support for doing that. And I think we need to gauge that with respect to the requests that we're getting in. So, I mean, International Day of Peace, UN, I'm familiar with the work that they do for refugees. I'm familiar with the work that they do for trade and development. So clearly, they do important work in those areas. So, you know, I think what I would do is ask the community, what's the sense and what sort of a reaction do we get from folks? Is this an isolated request, or is this something that the community really wants us to do something about, which seems to me is the ultimate question here? And then the choices are just recognizing that the request has been made and urging citizens to respond appropriately versus any sort of kind of official, if you will, sanction, if you will, by the council, which may be appropriate in some cases and not in others. So anyway, those were just a couple thoughts I had on that issue.
Great, thank you. Unless there are any other comments, why don't we go on to approval of the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I did have one additional... Mr. Mayor, I did have one additional comment. The Northern Virginia Transportation Commission last week reviewed its 50 years of existence. Carol DeLong was there, Lawrence Webb was there, other people from the city. I had the opportunity to be there. It's really amazing, over 50 years, the growth in metro. Many, many times, its original, well, it was created, and then many, many times, its original ridership, VRE, new metro lines. I think there's a sense that we really need to regionally address bus service to improve it and make it higher quality overall and more capable of serving more people. But they produced a print that shows the developments, and I hope city council will all be able to get a copy of that print, and I'd ask that we do that. And it is a source of pride that the city, from the beginning, has been a regional partner and such an important entity. So thanks to all that this council has done and prior councils have done to support that important effort.
Thank you, and thank you for all your efforts in that regard and on regional transportation issues. We greatly appreciate it. Let's go on and move to the next item, which is approval of minutes from March 24th, 2014.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to call the clerk's attention, I'm just reading through here, and I believe there might be a couple of letters or a word at line 109. I think the word at the end of that line wants to be pursuing, not pursing.
Was it purging, you said?
Pursing is the word, and I believe it's pursuing, line 109, last word. And then two lines below that, line 111, I think it just needs to say expanding the use of speed enforcement cameras. And unless anyone else has changes, I would move approval of the...
Okay.
Okay, sorry. I will withhold.
Mr. Baruch?
There's on line, some page 14, looks like line 532, towards the end, I think just there's some coding issues with the paragraph, with the...
I'm sorry, it's 532?
532? There's some, it should be the section, it's a computer coding thing. And then on line 545, I think I might have said, rather than I certify, I think it should be I believe, but it's not a huge difference there. I'm not sure exactly what I said, but it was one of those two words. I normally use I believe rather than certify.
Okay. With those changes, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the minutes of March 24th, 2014, as revised.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in, we do this as a, not as a roll call, we can do it as voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stentions? Motion carries, or the matter carries? Our next item is, is there any, let me just, I just put my agenda away, I'm sorry, what's next? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.